2021, our first meeting in 2021. We can do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. See my belly, we're good to go. All right. Before we get started again, I just want, I know that most of you are on the meeting on Saturday, but town employee Ed Casasik, thirty years for the town passed away last week, so we're gonna do a little moment of silence for Ed. Okay. Public speak. Amanda, if you can go around the members of the public who would like to add to our meeting, please do it.
All right, we'll start with Mike Pelosi. Let's see. Mike, we just have to get you to unmute yourself.
There we go. I'm gonna log off for this, Kathy's one. Here, one. Go with that.
Mike, would you like to try to call from your phone?
I'm on the phone.
Mike, turn your router off and on. So we worked well with the computer. Now go and turn your router off and turn it back on. And when your internet comes back, you'll have better connection. Okay.
Kathy, can you hear us from your phone okay?
I certainly can.
Okay, would you like to participate in public speak?
Do I want to? Yes, I'd like to talk about Saturday. I'd like to say what an excellent job the registered voters did in organizing everything. The town clerk for sending everything out. For Eric Anderson, he was fantastic. A very good guy telling us where to go. I thought everything went smoothly and I would love to see more meetings held that way until we're all safe through this COVID thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Grenier?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Dennis O'Brien?
I'll save my, my energy for the rest of the meeting. But I was very pleased to hear today that the initiative passed. And I talked to, I talked to Mike Pelosi today and to Eric about it and very, very pleased that it went well. And that's, that's great. That's all.
Great, thank you.
And I didn't recognize McGuire when I first saw him today. I thought he had a new hairdo.
He does.
All right, Shannon Loudon. All set?
I'm unmuting. So I too want to echo excellent job on Saturday, very pleased about the results. I also want to commend the search committee for finding a finance director. I'm really, Kathy, you need to mute sweetheart. Cause you're not muted. In any of them. I'm looking forward to more details about that. I think that's terrific and I really thank everybody was on the search committee for that. I think we found a wonderful person who's gonna do a terrific job for the town and Board of Ed. And invite everybody to attend our Board of Ed meeting on Wednesday. It's the first time we'll be considering our budget. And also honoring Laura Edwards, who retired as of officially last Thursday on her sixtieth birthday. She's done a fantastic job for us for five years. And so would love to see as many people there who can be there to both hear about our budget and to say goodbye to Laura in good stead. Thank you.
Thanks Shannon. Elaine Bacard.
You done mute yourself?
There, I was having a hard time finding the button to unmute myself. Anyway, I just echoed that Saturday was great. You guys did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thanks Elaine. Okay, Joanne Hubbard?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, it looks like we're all set.
Okay. Additions and deletions to the agenda?
Jeff, if we could, I'd like to move item nine C up to four C. Just so Jay Tuttle doesn't have to sit on the whole meeting.
I second that.
Absolutely. Well, I'll make that motion that we move nine C up to four C. Scott second, all in favor? Aye. Any other additions and deletions? Adrian Mandeville, glad you could join us.
Oh, I'm sure you're just thrilled.
All right. So Adrian, do you have anything you want to add to the meeting?
No, I think most of, I have some questions, but they'll fall into other topics, so we're good.
Okay. All right, so we're going to just move that one item up to four C. So we're gonna go start, get started with Board Commission Presentations four A, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, Combined Finance Department Committee. Eric, do you want to give that one?
Sure, I'll give that one. Real quick, regarding the, so we have a tentative agreement with the new finance director, the person we're hiring for a finance director. With an expected start date of February eighth. However, as we started to finalize that, we did realize one thing. And that is the town and the school by state law need a formal agreement in place before we can have a combined department and combined personnel. So I left you a motion. The, the school's labor attorney has drafted a document that will do just that. I reviewed it, I don't have any issues with it. I asked Dennis to review it, he didn't have any issues with it. And so basically what, what I'd like to do is have you guys make a motion. You know, to authorize me to sign that agreement prior to us hiring Agada. If I sign it today or tomorrow, then the Board of Ed can sign it at their Wednesday meeting. And then, you know, we have a final agreement in place with Agada. If that makes sense to all of you.
Did you send that agreement out to us?
I think so. Did I not?
I saw it.
I think it's in the packet.
It's, it's stuff for tonight's meeting, the email he sent at four oh nine on the eleventh.
I did not send it super early, I would admit that.
What he's trying to say is he sent it at four o'clock this afternoon. It's the third attachment, says cooperative agreement.
Okay. All right, does someone want to make that motion?
I'll do it. I moved to authorize town administrator to sign a cooperative agreement with the Andover Elementary School as authorized by Connecticut General Statute after one seventy-one, section ten dash two forty-one B to share the services of a finance director.
Number one second man? I'll second it. Further discussion?
I, I'd like to get a chance to read it. I mean, it was sent at four o'clock this afternoon without a notice that it was being sent for tonight, so.
Why was the term for two years, just as a question since I'm reading it now? Anybody, Eric?
Because, because the contract for Agada will be for two years. So it matches the contract.
I don't really care if it matches the contract, it's not really, we might have another person that comes in and we should not have that be, have to be renewed every time we hire a new person. So anyway. Dennis O'Brien, I'll ask you a question, did you have any problems with the agreement? Did I lose Dennis?
I think he's muted.
You're muted Dennis.
I, when I first looked at it, I had some questions and Eric answered my questions. We have, we have one like that here, it's, we've had a lot of experience with a shared situation and didn't work out too well, so we went to something like what you're doing where the finance director will be actually working for both of you, but paid by the, by the education department. And apparently the assistant director will be paid by the town. Now, I think that requires, will require you to have another contract with the Board of Ed for the assistant position. Because there's, but there is something that covers that in here, it does say that it's under section nine, Roman numeral nine. Additional costs and expenses, the parties may agree in writing to split certain expenses for supplies, equipment and other resources used by both the town and the board. I would assume that you can do a similar contract when you, when you finally get around to, or maybe you already have hired a an assistant director of finance. And that's exactly what we do in, in Wyndham, the, except that the director is, is, is under the control mostly of the town and the assistant is under the control of the Board of Ed. Because when they had one director under the control of both of them, they were serving, the director was serving two masters and it didn't work out very well. But anyway, this contract looks okay to me. I probably wouldn't write it exactly this way if I were writing it, but I think it's, I would just ask to review it and give it my approval. And as, as it's written, I approve it, I didn't know. You mentioned Mr. First Selectman that it's a two-year contract?
It is.
And it's a two-year contract for the position, not for the, not for the person to fill the position. That will be a separate agreement, I assume, with the Board of Ed. And it can be terminated though upon written notice of sixty days. Looks like you can, you know, it looks like it's a two, one of those two-year, two-year contract that you can get out of with sixty days notice. Which, which makes, you know, could, you know, answer your question, Jeff, to some extent. It's not, you're not locked in for two years and I don't think you have to have cause to, to, to get out of it under, under, I just read through it quickly. So there's flexibility there.
I, I guess I don't look at it that way, I look at it as like this is a benefit. We're trying to move forward with the town and we're writing an agreement with ourselves, giving one board the ability to get out of a contract in sixty days. That's kind of asinine. So.
Well, if anybody's gonna want to get out of it, well, I don't know, it could be either party.
Okay.
I, I do, I do have some concern reading this, that it says that the Board of, the school board is gonna be the one that, that gives the review of the person with input from the town, but it doesn't say that it's, it's a pass through. It, it basically also says that they're an employee of the board directly, which.
What board?
Board of, Board of, Board of Education.
Right, and Marina is a direct employee of the town. Right, it's one and one.
So was any consideration given to how this, is it, does it affect Murph or any of that stuff? Like, is it the same no matter where they work?
So in that case, yes, Murph will be the same whether they work for the town or they work for the school. Laura was on Murph and so will the, her replacement, Agada. Or Agada.
Okay.
Well, if I may, like I said, we, we experienced that the hard way. We started out with a joint agreement between the Board of Ed and the Town of Wyndham. Of course, we're a town of twenty-five thousand people, a lot more complicated, a lot more politics going on there, I think, than you have here. You may not think so, but I know Wyndham very well. And now I know a little bit about Andover after being here for quite a while. But what they had was a situation where the, both the superintendent of schools and the town manager, either one could initiate disciplinary action or actually fire the person. And yeah, they were, they were fighting constantly about it and maybe Adrian knows about it because you, you work in town a lot and you hear a lot of things. But it didn't work and we just changed the charter again to set up a system that's very similar to what you have. Where the Board of Ed has control over one employee, that would be the assistant. And the Town of Wyndham has control over the, the director.
I guess, I, I'm not seeing anything in here that covers grievances or discipline or even a work schedule. So what is the agreement for work schedule?
So that's in her contract. This is not her contract. This is simply an agreement between the town that satisfies the state requirement that there be a cooperative agreement. In other words, we cannot legally sign a contract with Agada unless we have an agreement in place.
So where's her, so where's her contract?
I don't have a copy of her contract.
Then, then how can we vote on this?
Because you're not voting on a contract.
You're just setting up a structure here.
I know, but we set up the structure that the school board signs the contract, but we never get to see what it actually says?
No, because, I'm sorry to interrupt, but she's gonna be an employee of the Board of Education. So Adrian, what you are being asked to do is to allow Eric the authorization to sign an agreement as the town's representative to allow us to hire Agada.
Well, we're not gonna.
You haven't even gotten to her contract.
Shannon, we're not, we're not gonna vote on this tonight. I'm gonna, I'm not voting yes until I see the contract for Agada.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not, I mean, and this is not, this should not be.
We didn't see the contract from Marina, so she's also supposed to be working on behalf of the school, correct or not at all? Right?
Do I have a contract, did I see a contract from Marina? Anybody else on this board see a contract from Marina?
No, I didn't see.
Shannon, what do you want?
You're muted Shannon, unmute yourself.
I know, and I don't mean to interrupt your meeting, I don't want to be disrespectful to the rules. I'm just saying, I, this is the, I just learned about this like a day or so ago. I haven't seen a copy of the agreement of what you're considering, I'm texting Valerie right now to ask where that is, that I believe it was drafted by the board's attorney. But what you're being asked to do is to authorize Eric to enter it, from my understanding, again, I'm not looking at it like you are. My understanding is, is that much like we're gonna ask the Board of Education on Wednesday simply to authorize me to sign an agreement so that we actually can even enter into a contract with a joint finance director. You're being asked to authorize Eric to be able to sign an agreement that authorizes the town to hire a joint finance director.
Listen, I, I.
Right, that's what I, that's what the agreement says supposedly.
Shannon, I have no, I, I don't have any problem with the agreement in the way it's written. I have a problem with signing it until I know the implications of that contract. Cause signing this means that contract can then get signed.
Yes, but what you are doing is you're authorizing the town administrator, who is her boss, her supervisor, to, to enter into a contract. Do you sign off on all contracts for all town employees? I don't think the Board of Selectmen has that authority. It is the authority of the town administrator and the authority of the superintendent to enter into contracts with their employees. Correct?
What would the board like to move forward? Start with that.
That's not accurate.
You want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Board of Selectmen is the, is the executive authority. The, the town administrator is their agent. So the Board of Selectmen does have the final say on, on contracts like this, no question. Or a contract for, an employment contract as well. It's different.
Does, does this board have a problem getting together later this week or by email to give Eric authorization? Once we have a chance to read it and have our questions answered?
Oh, I would like to see their contract also.
Okay. All right, so Eric, since we have this, we'll read it after the meeting and then we'll get you our questions and let's sit there and see if we can get this answered quickly. And then it would help us if, if you have some type of contract for Agada that we could at least understand it. Okay, let's move on. So you say you have a tentative agreement with finance director, but that means we don't have a contract that we've written up. Or are you trying to tell this board that the Board of Education has the, has, is writing up the contract for this employee? What are you telling us Eric?
So I'm telling you that I have not personally seen a copy of the contract. I know the contract, I know what the rough outlines of the contract are. But I don't know, you know, I have not personally had a chance to review that contract. Ultimately, that will be a contract between the Board of Education and the finance director.
Okay. My understanding, if I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but is not Marina the new person? Isn't she a union employee? So there really wasn't a contract per se, she was hired into a position. Is that correct?
Well, other than her contract was quite, there's a memorandum of understanding that was signed with the union regarding employing Marina. Because obviously she makes, her hours are very different. Her salary is quite different and she works for multiple entities. So her job description is quite different. So yes, she is part of the same bargaining unit. Yes, some provisions of the union contract apply to her, but there's a memorandum of understanding that states the details.
Did I miss something or was, was, was there a select person that was on, like in, in helping with that or? Cause I never saw any of that, I never saw a memorandum of understanding.
Or a contract? Copy of the memorandum of understanding?
That would be a first good start there.
Good.
But we also need that contract because regardless of what technicality you think that who is hiring who and who is paying for them. We need to see the documents so that we can all be on the same page. Please get us those documents.
Yeah, yeah, copy of the Marina's contract, the memorandum, a copy of this new contract that's in discussion.
Valerie, Valerie is going to forward those to me right now, she just responded to my text, I'd be happy to forward those to the board as soon as I receive them, if you'd like me to do that.
Thank you Shannon. And Shannon, listen, I, I don't know how anyone else feels, but if you have something pertinent to say during a Board of Selectmen meeting, I have no issue with someone interrupting to bring us up to speed if someone else on this, if someone else on this call doesn't have the information and you have it. I'm perfectly fine with someone speaking up, so.
Instead of waiting, it's best to have that information.
Let's just, you know.
Okay, are we done?
Attorney too, of course. Right?
What's that?
Talking about me too, right?
No, no, you have to be quiet, mute him, will you?
I can do that.
All right, does anyone have anything else on four A that they want to deal with or talk about? No, okay, let's go to four B Conservation Commission. We were all provided a report on hunting on town property.
Sorry to interrupt you Jeff, but there was the town accounting software update that was also supposed to be part of that, part of the agenda. And I was interested in hearing about that.
No update at this point.
Where are we at with it?
About the same spot we were at the last month. We haven't really made any progress on it.
Okay. Are we waiting for the new person to come in, is that the impetus?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Um. And so the, the vendor's been notified that we're holding out and what we're waiting on? Are we gonna sign, are we gonna sign a new schedule with them once they start or?
I think once we have the new finance director on board, we're gonna have to sit down and figure out what a reasonable schedule for, for making that happen is, yes.
Yeah, because now we're in the middle of budgeting.
Yep. No question.
Okay.
So you know when your start date of your software is?
No, he doesn't, because we don't know until they, they're gonna sit down and make a plan, he just.
Not running yet.
July first, twenty twenty-one, let's go. Okay. Conservation Commission, the report on hunting on town property. Mike Pelosi, do you want to talk about this or? Well, we all read, did everyone have a chance to read the?
Yes. Yeah, we already.
Okay.
Kathy and Mike, if you press star six to unmute yourself from the phone. We'll be able to hear you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi Kathy.
Hello.
Okay, so Mike, do you want to represent the, the Conservation Commission on this report on hunting on town property?
Yeah, I think it was pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, well, a couple of our members researched the things that, you know, what the state has, how we come under their control and stuff and, and the bottom line is, we didn't see anything wrong with what you guys did, we're just weighing in, that's all.
Okay. So does anybody else on the board want to talk about this issue?
I'm all set.
Well, what's the? So are we, is this issue getting dropped now because the Conservation Commission?
No, it sounded like Mike just said that he was all set with what we did, so he doesn't. I, I think the, the report didn't exactly say what he just said, but he, the Conservation Commission said they, they didn't recommend hunting.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking.
But now Mike is saying that he didn't say, see anything wrong with what we did. But.
Well, it was just very vague on what the, we, we, we researched what the hunting requirements are for the state of Connecticut. And this is what you see there. And nothing was exceeded as far as hunters per square mile, that kind of stuff as far as we could see. So, so we're just weighing in, you guys are gonna move forward with it, but we had a chance to weigh in and we did.
Well, I mean, that's the question, it didn't say, it didn't seem to encourage or discourage, but it didn't, it, I think the take at the very end was that it wasn't needed.
Right.
That's right.
So, so I'm misreading that when I, so the commission doesn't have a, a negative or a positive on it?
It doesn't have a negative for sure.
Okay, all right.
That, that, that makes me feel a little better.
Yeah, I mean, reading it Mike, I would have not taken that point.
Right.
I agree a hundred percent, I thought I was against.
Yeah, so did I.
So, so did I.
The way it's worded.
I mean, do you want to read the one sentence, one sentence conclusion?
Yeah, right.
Maybe you could change that, that report a little bit.
Well. Conservation said, what does the, what does the board want to do with this issue? Do you want to vote on it and, and, and? Do you not want to vote on it, what, what is your desire?
I just think we should put it in the record, that's all. That they made their a report on the.
But, but we never voted on this issue as.
Not yet, no.
No, no, we were letting, I think we were kind of letting, you know, trying to get some more feedback from different areas and look around and see what was kind of out there. I mean, it's interesting that we're talking about it because there are four other towns also talking about it around us, so.
Right.
He's right here. Yeah, maybe we could clear up that last line. I see what you're saying, but I, I believe that says we didn't see a need to act on anything in that.
Well, that would, that would sound better at the end of the report than what's there Mike.
Well, that would, that would sound better at the end of the report than what's there, Mike.
Yeah, well, it says in conclusion, Conservation Commission does not see a conservation management need for opening, oh, I see, for opening a town parcel.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, well, let me, let me see if we can come back to that. And I'll be in touch with you, Eric, you know, in the next day or so.
Alright.
Okay.
Let me give you my interpretation if you don't mind. I think all it says is you don't need to do it to thin out the herd. But, you know, there's all kinds of other reasons why you would. I mean, it doesn't say you can't do it or you shouldn't do it. But, but that's not a reason.
Accidents on town roads. Okay.
Just, just, we're just one thing to add. I mean, we, I've talked to Scott about this a few times and a few other people and, you know, we've talked about this hunting and we don't know if the people that want to hunt on town land are even bow hunters or rifle or shotgun hunters. So we need to get that clarified as well, the people that wanted to hunt on top of property.
Well, I mean, I'll be candid with you. I'm, I'm not, at this time, I'm not supportive of rifle hunters, I think.
I'm not either. I mean, I was only supportive of a bow hunting only and I don't see anybody really coming out of the woodwork saying I really want to hunt on town land. So unless, unless we have a huge contingent of residents that wish to bow hunt on town land, I don't really see any reason to move forward with this.
Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to item five, appointments.
Hang on, before you did that, we moved up EC.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Mr. Tuttle.
Jay Tuttle, Public Works introduction, Jay Tuttle.
So first of all, I just, not all of you have met Jay Tuttle. Jay Tuttle is the new Public Works Supervisor. So I asked him to come on this meeting and just introduce himself tonight and answer any questions that all y'all might have. Jay?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me alright?
We can, thank you.
Well, thank you for inviting me and started on the 21st officially. And things are moving along, making a little bit of progress here, cleaning things up and just kind of getting my feet wet and getting acclimated to the town.
Any problems with Eric yet?
Nothing that I can think of, point my finger to anyway. At the moment.
Get a contract for Jay?
Oh boy, too soon?
Too soon?
Well, Jay, thank you very much for attending our meeting and anytime that you need to talk to, to us. You can attend our meetings. We try to make them quick. Mr. Mandeville is very good about that. And anything we can do with, you can do with Eric, you, you let us know if you need any.
Yeah, let us know, Jay.
No, seriously, Jay, you got, you asked the guy to cut on the call. Well, do you have any questions for us? You know, how is it going? You settled in well?
Yeah, no, you know, just getting up to speed here with the computer and just waiting for that to come online. We'll get that this week sometime. So this one's a little bit old. We made a couple of things work today. So I can get online here with you.
Are we getting him a different computer, Eric, or what's the situation?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's due here this week and like I said, we're just cleaning things up around here and guys are welcoming me on board. And it seemed like we've got a good group here and they're willing to, you know, move forward, get stuff done.
Did Eric get you the jackets? Has that been ordered yet?
We're working on that. I'm waiting, waiting for some samples to come in.
Alright.
Believe it, believe it or not, those are hard to come by too, along with everything else.
Sure.
Glad to hear you're cleaning things up.
You should go down there, the, the, the Public Works building looks like 10 times better than it did.
I was, I was down there a few years ago and it was, it was kind of a shocking sight. I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's getting cleaned up and organized.
Yeah, they are. They're, he's.
Very good.
They're, and they're, the guys are really, seem to be, you know, moving in the right direction there. They seem to be happy to be.
Everybody, everybody works better in an organized building when they got things when they need it.
Yeah. Jay, thanks for coming on board.
No, thanks for inviting me and I'm looking forward to working with the town and hopefully I can help move things along.
Great.
Welcome aboard.
There is no shortage of work out there according to our list of projects that we need.
Exactly.
Yep. Yeah, and that goes without saying. It's, it's like that everywhere. Just pick your poison and, and try to put out some fires and make some progression.
Jay, when it, just ahead of steam, before you get into the budget season here, the thing that we're gonna be looking for is a word from you is, you know, direction is to, you know, basically we like to have a plan for the year, but we also want to know a broad strokes plan so that we can understand that if something's not getting addressed this year when it's been getting addressed, so.
Yep.
You know.
Good.
So Eric's been pretty good about that, but, you know, his experience level on yours and when it comes to paving is a little different, so. You know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any other questions for Jay?
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move on to five appointments. Jim Rupert, Rupert Building Official.
We'll deal with that in a little bit, under old business or new business, new business.
Okay. There are no resignations, Eric, or are there?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
First.
Seven Town Administrators Report.
Okay, you've all seen the report. I'm just gonna go over the things that have changed. Obviously, you all know about Ed Kasek or Kasek. You know, it really sucks that he died five weeks after he retired. But, you know, that's life, I guess. COVID stuff, the, the, our first responders have gotten the first COVID shot and a lot of them have gotten the second COVID shot at this point, so we're moving along pretty well with that. The governor announced today that they'll begin vaccinating senior 75 and over as of next week. And we should have more details within the next couple of days as well as more scheduling. And I notified Roberta and Kathy are putting together a list of those we know of that are over 75 to make sure we notify them to get on the list and get a, a, a date for the vaccine.
Now, how are we cross referencing? Are we doing voter rolls? What are we doing?
I don't know the specifics.
Okay.
Eric, excuse me. Eric, I'm using the voter roll list and, and the list that we're using. Also, the current senior list that we have are active list as well.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, and as of today, the town of Andover has had 108 positive COVID death tests and two deaths from COVID. Uh, da, 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 hang on a second. I put in your packet, the memorandum, the, the fire chief had asked me to approve of a training session that the fire department wanted to conduct. This is being led by the Connecticut State Fire Department, but it's occurring in our building. Their concern is that they're running low on certified instructors and they need to get enough certified instructors to host enough training that their department itself stays certified to do their jobs. So I approved that. We went over and talked about what controls were in place to do it safely. I felt it was a reasonable risk, so I approved it. Town Hall, as you know, we're still open by appointment only, but we're pretty much fully staffed at this point. The town hall is running reasonably well. The, last week, we held the vote for the land acquisition that passed 62 to 2. So far, everybody that did the drive-by voting was fairly positive about it. I think that probably ought to serve as our model for how we conduct the original budget vote to go to referendum if we're still dealing with COVID when it comes time for the budget meeting, townwide budget meeting. So I spoke to Wally and the registrars afterward about how that would happen. And there's still some things to work out, but it seems like that's probably the most logical way, rather than try to do everything online with Zoom. Do the meeting portion on Zoom and then have a drive-up vote. So that's, that's what we're thinking of as we get into the spring and get farther into budget season. As I said before, we have a tentative agreement with the person that's gonna be taking over as the finance director. Likely start dates around February 8th. Obviously, we need a final contract and we need an agreement in place before the town and the school. Building Department, there's two things for today. The first is approval of what I gave you last week, which was an updated fee structure. My recommendation is to put that in effect as of March 1st to give the builders in town a chance, because some of them will have baked in our fee structure into their proposals. And I don't want to screw the builders. So it gives them basically at least 45 days between, before the fees go into effect. And the second thing is a recommendation to switch from the building official being a town employee to a shared service through Bolton. Because that seems to be lower cost and probably better overall service than the options we had for hiring somebody directly as a town employee. So that's Building Department. Do, 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 do. We talked about Public Works. And we did settle on using a company called Weatherworks to provide us more detailed weather information specifically regarding Public Works. So, so far, that seems to be working pretty well. As far as the transfer station goes, we had a couple complaints in the last few weeks about other residents at the transfer station not wearing masks. Not something I've done any, done anything about. I suspect we have a high enough fraction of people that are in the never willing to wear mask camp that we cause ourselves more problems than we solve by trying to force universal mask wearing at the transfer station. That's my take on it. If you guys have a different take on it, I'm happy to entertain it. Just so you know, that we're anticipating a road closure of Bunker Hill Road for two days during the day. Sometime in mid to the end of February, and that's so they can do the test bores for the bridge, you know, for the bridge abutments, so they know how far they need to plan on the bridge abutments going for the replacement of Bunker Hill Road Bridge. I've notified the adjoining towns, Public Works has been notified, the fire department and the school and school bus drivers. So it will be a little bit of an inconvenience for a couple of days. But it's a good test run, so people understand what they're gonna be going through when we close it for an entire summer. So that should be coming up again around mid-February. No real updates on that. Revaluation, so we've had to this point, as far as I know, two complaints regarding the rebau service. You know, again, given the number that we've done, overall, it's been very positive. But there have been a couple, you know, vocal people that were upset with the process.
We've had what, two complaints out of six or 700s that have been completed so far? Is that correct?
Yeah, something in that range, yep.
I mean, I know there was some back and forth. Was anything done to address? I mean, we got the email as far as the one resident. Was anything else required with the second resident?
No, that was, that one, frankly, the company screwed up. Because that individual had asked them to notify them ahead of time when they were going to be there and Vision did not. So that was, that one was very definitely the fault of Vision, Vision screwed that one up. There's no question. You know, the, the person wasn't mad. In the end, they were just not happy that, you know, they had asked to be notified and they weren't, so.
Okay.
So that's that.
What's our, what's our expected completion on those?
Think we're still around four weeks out for.
For initials, right? And then we've got callbacks for anybody that didn't.
Yeah, and then they'll, they'll, I mean, the actual finish date is not till next October.
Yeah, I know that.
By the time everything's done.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, let's see, complaints this month. Talked about the rebound one. We did get one complaint about difficulty driving up Boston Hill Road due to ice, which I explained wasn't really anything we could do about since that was the state. We've had a couple complaints about people still leaving their political signs up. I've explained that there's nothing really that we can do about that. We have had a complaint about somebody living in a trailer illegally on Shoddy Mill Road. That's basically at the, we've already issued the cease and desist, so the next step up for that is basically to lawyer up and, you know, go after them in court.
Do we have anything going on the, on the trailer on Wales Road that's also being lived in?
You know what? I misspoke. That's on Wales Road, not on Shoddy Mill Road. I wrote that incorrectly.
Thank you.
So we're talking about the same thing. My apologies.
Alright.
Did have one customer unhappy that his mailbox got wrecked on Bear Swamp. But it was a plastic one and it appears it got, got hit by the snow, not by the plow itself, so that's on them. We've had several people unhappy that we don't have a burning official in place yet. I'm in the process of addressing that with the fire department. They have two of their members that are willing to go through the training session, become burning officials. We had a complaint, multiple complaints about a rabid fox in the Lake District. And we've had a couple complaints about kids doing donuts in the parking lot at Veterans Memorial Field. For evidence of them doing donuts. So that's basically where we are in terms of complaints, and that's what I have unless you have questions for me.
Did someone see the kids doing the donuts in Veterans Park?
No, they just called because they looked at the snow and it was clear somebody had done donuts in the park. And they were upset about that.
And we're sure it wasn't an animal?
I don't know.
Wasn't a rabid fox, was it?
Driving a pickup truck? I don't know.
Could have been.
I don't know.
Hey, this is 2020, 20. We're talking about anything could have happened.
Sharpshooters could have come out looking for the fox. Okay.
Eric, I just have one question on the building official. Is that gonna be just like, is he just gonna be a contracted service? Or we're just gonna give him a 1099 kind of deal? We're just paying for hours worked?
So we are just gonna do a share, and I put that in your packet.
Okay.
It's just basically a shared service agreement with the town of Bolton to provide the town of Andover with a building official and an assistant building official.
Okay, understood.
Well, why were there two different, are you done, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm done.
Why were there two different contracts?
Two different numbers on the contract, yeah.
So what I asked them to do is to give us a contract that takes us up through July 1, a short, like, six-month contract. And then a two-year contract, so we get on a regular cycle that lines up with our fiscal year. So it's predictable as to what the costs are. So that's what that is.
So is that?
One is next fiscal year.
Okay, sorry about that, Eric. Is that allowing the billing inspector from Bolton to have more of a full-time schedule now? What was he at Bolton?
24.
24 hours?
Yeah.
Uh, so, so. So, so Bolton, so you know, they have both a building official and an assistant building official. And they currently cover four towns. And over will be town number five. So we're basically, you know, we're shared. Bolton provides it as a service for a bunch of area towns. We would just be one extra town. And so what we did is I sat down with Jim Rupert. And we looked at the, the, the size of Andover. And then also the number of permits pulled and the types of permits pulled in town. And did comparables to all the other towns they come up with. And basically what we did is we scaled the services we're getting. You know, to be in line with the number of actual inspections they need to do. And how that would work out. And that's how we came up with the, essentially the hours per week of coverage. You know, which is, in the end, it's roughly the same number of hours coverage. We got from Ed, except because Ed was a standalone building official. You know, every time he went to do his mandatory training, he built the town for that too. And we got billed for all his supplies. So hourly, we're paying considerably more, but we don't have to pay for training. We don't have to pay for supplies. We're just straight paying for a shared service. And the other good thing from my perspective is that because he's got an assistant building official. We never have to worry about coverage because if he's out, his assistant covers, you know, and.
Now, does that contract, are we paying mileage on top of it? Or do we have to cover insurance for the vehicle? Any of that?
So the only thing we have to cover, we have to cover mileage if it's an emergency inspection. That's it. Not for regular, you know, day to day stuff is built into the standard contract.
Okay.
So like, like for instance, when we had that fire. Off of Gilead, if it was an emergency response, we'd be paying for them to come out. You know, off hours, paying for mileage for that.
So just so, so I understand. How many hours are, are you anticipating? Utilization on the Bolton Department? How many hours?
About five.
And are the other towns in this agreement that are already doing it? Do they have home, do they have a home rules type? You know, secretary or something in the town hall as well, or?
That's not a question I've asked. I don't know. I know they're not, although Jim Rupert has, they have a building admin at Bolton. I don't think that covers, that's not part of the agreement. You know, we didn't also contract for the administrative services relative to the building department.
No, I'm asking because now that we're moving towards this. I want to know what the other, you know, there's, you said we're town five. So I'd like to know what the other four town structures are. And whether or not we should be considering. If we're, if we're, if we're getting to that point and we're only five hours. You know, we have a full, how many hours is Susan working downstairs now?
Thirty.
So we basically have a full time employee downstairs. And a building official that's only needing to five hours. Should we be looking at a different structure set? You know? Or we, do we need thirty hours downstairs? You know?
Okay, so Eric, if you can look into that, just give us back a report on that part of it.
I mean, if it doesn't get addressed before budget, I'm certainly going to ask that question of budget. So.
So I mean, the, the question is, is do you want? To have somebody available to answer questions or do you not? I mean, because we have this problem with all departments. You know, if you don't have somebody there, you know, what happens when you call? What happens is I get called and I end up spending my time dealing with people who are building questions. Because there's nobody they can talk to. I mean, I think you should probably have somebody in that office full time. You know, is my guess and available to answer questions. But that, that's a level of service and you know, it's. It's less a question of, it's more a question of what, what level of service? Do you want to provide to residents, I think, than anything else Adrian?
That's all I understand. I understand that, but the building code in general across the state is standardized. Right? There are some local ordinance issues, but otherwise it's generally standardized. There is no reason that five separate towns. Need five separate employees sitting in an office waiting for a phone call. That's a waste of resources as far as I'm concerned.
So, so Adrian's point is well taken. So Eric, what are the other four towns that Bolton services out?
I know Wellington, I think Ashford. I don't know what the other towns are.
Okay, so if we can, if we can find out what they do with their administrative staff, that would help us.
Yeah.
You know, for the next budget cycle.
Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, Eric, is this thirty hour a week person doing zoning too?
No.
Yep, zoning wetlands.
Okay, I, I.
But she's not doing zoning in Wetlands. She's taking in forms.
Well, she's doing the administrative part, the, the. Secretarial, administrative, whatever you want to call it. Answering the phone, whatnot. So she's not just doing building work. Is that would be thirty hours?
It's not the whole, my point is I don't think the whole department is thirty hours, no matter how much you have thrown in down there.
You may be right. I don't know. But I, I just wondered if there were more functions.
So.
I thought there were.
So that is something Adrian that we need to take up during the budget cycle.
I understand that, but it's if we wait till the budget cycle and then we ask Eric to go get those answers, then we won't have it done in budget cycle. It'll be next year.
So fine. So since we're in the middle of this process, any information Eric can gather will all help us.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Paul, did Paula fall? Is she okay? Okay, I thought you fought and you couldn't get up.
I caught that too, Adrian.
He was hoping that she could get in another standing competition with Jeff Murray. That's what she was hoping.
Isn't that a song?
All right, let's, let's move on. So. And we'll go to eight old business. Eric has already provided us with the COVID update. Eight B, the alarm monitoring for town buildings. Eric, where are you at with that?
I do not have anything back from Wally. The Board of Fire Commissioners had, said they would provide it to me by this meeting. And I don't have it, frankly.
Eight C is adopt the fee schedule for the building department, which was in our packages. Adrian, I'm assuming that you worked through this with. Eric.
Eric doesn't consult me on anything. I haven't seen this yet.
It's not what I heard.
Don't even start with me, Adrian.
Yes, I, I went over this with Eric.
Okay, so are you comfortable with it?
I am. We had some discussion back and forth and. I think everything that we're looking at is fair and comparable. So.
Okay, and just so I understand that this is the building department, but where, where do permits? Such as retaining walls on the lake go? Are they part of the building department? They part of wetlands? What is that?
Both?
Yes. In other words, both.
Oh, so where would that structure be?
So the inland wetlands commission has its own fee schedule, which is not part of this.
Not part of this. Okay, so as we go into our next budget cycle, I've had this conversation with Eric that. We need to make sure that these fees and all fees within the town are. Are appropriate so that we can pay for those departments that are there. So it's got to be more of a pay for play situation. So we have to be able to generate enough fees to. Provide the appropriate level of supervision in, in, in. That are required.
Eric, we didn't, we didn't look at retaining wall fees. Should we be looking at that?
Retroactive, what do you mean?
Is there a permit already out on a specific house that we're thinking of?
I've already paid my permits. But I've had the conversation with my contractor that. You know, there's a level of oversight the town needs to provide. We need to pay for those things. You need to make sure that the fees that people are charged are appropriate. So. If Adrian's good with that, I'm fine. I mean, I just want to make.
They were, they were woefully inadequate before.
Oh, a hundred percent agree.
And they're, they're definitely in line, but they're not outrageous. So. Basically, basically we're trying to cover our costs. Of the department and, you know, as we're moving forward. So.
Correct. Eric's given me. You know, he's told me without a doubt that he'll cover all the costs for the building department with the new updated fee structure. We have to hold him to that. And make sure that we do, but. I mean, those, these fees have to cover all of the costs of the building department. And make sure that we try to calculate that and we should look at that during the budgeting cycle so that we know that. If we, it, it goes to Adrian's point. If you have somebody that's sitting in a department for thirty hours and you have fees that you can collect, those fees better cover those thirty hours. Because if not, you don't have enough work.
Right.
Anyway. Okay, anybody have any questions for Eric or Adrian on the fee structure?
Does the department, does the fee structure pay for the department as it stands now? Eric?
The current fee structure does not.
Does not.
We cover, we collect somewhere around the low forties in terms of thousands of dollars per year. In building department fees. Not including driveway bonds, which we take in and release.
And, and we would need how much?
I don't have that document staring me right in front. I can find it, but. But we're talking about realistically, what we're doing here is going to more than double the intake for the building department. Which should basically cover a hundred percent of the fees for the building department.
Good. Thank you, Eric and Adrian.
Is anyone want to make a motion to? To, I guess we have sit there and to enact the new fee structure?
Is that required, Eric? I don't know that it is.
Yeah, you're the authority that approves it. Yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the new fee structure as outlined by Eric Anderson.
I'll second that.
Read the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. An update on the town meeting for land acquisition that was held on Saturday, January ninth. Sixty-two, it went well. Thank you very much to the registrars. And all the people that volunteered their time for it, or actually they got paid, but thank you very much for it. And for Eric standing out directing traffic. And I don't know if you noticed it, but in his nice new Andover garb. That he so willingly went out and bought for himself. I really was. Impressed with the green jacket and I don't know if you noticed it today, but Eric is now wearing his new red polo.
Right.
Are we getting billed for those?
You're not getting billed for those.
Okay, that's fine. Otherwise I want to pick the colors.
Okay.
White.
White.
Yeah, smart.
Okay, so we're now going on to new business. Nine A is a discussion regarding the thirty acres of land for sale. And Merritt Valley Road adjoining town owned property. Scott, would you like to bring this one up?
Oh, Jeff is the one, I guess, that brought it, put this into the meeting.
Yeah, I just noticed that property was for sale. I've heard conflicting stories, whether somebody said there's a deposit on it. And I spoke to Eric briefly about it and he was familiar with the town. Considering the property at one time. Since it's on the other side and would give our seventy acres access to Merritt Valley and possibly Lake Road. I wanted to put it on the agenda just for some discussion and felt, and felt. We should discuss it and see what the other selectmen have to say about it.
Sale has not been finalized, but the buyer has already dug test pits on the property.
Okay.
For development.
And, you know, we went after this in the springtime to try to buy it, but.
What are they asking?
They only, they only wanted a hundred and thirty-nine for it, I think. No, was it a hundred? Yeah, I think it was a hundred and thirty-nine. Anyways, you know, we went through the whole thing with the planning and zoning and conservation commission and everybody. Thought that it was only worth a hundred, but I, I thought that it was, you know, how much more ideal of a piece of property could you get than that?
Yeah, I mean, since it, since it opened us up to that prime section on the other side of the wa- wetlands. On the hill there, I thought it was an excellent opportunity to look into it. That's why I brought it up on the agenda. Because I think we would have saved that just in road construction, trying to get through that wet area on our town.
Oh my god, yeah, and that.
It's just kind of in hindsight now it's twenty twenty, but. I, I don't know if we should keep an eye on it and see what progresses. It's just, I, I feel we, we lost a major opportunity by not chasing that property.
Yeah. One thing I don't understand, Jeff.
Go ahead, Eric.
Chasing it for what? I mean, what would you propose to do there?
I mean, I mean, we have seventy acres now. It's pretty much kind of landlocked with, you know, a stream and wetlands that we would have to cross to get over. I think it would just have expanded our options for future. But, you know, housing up there or, or have a developer interest in that property would give us two means of egress. Besides the school. I mean, we could have gone in through Merritt Valley or else put a continuous road in future all the way down to Merritt. So it's just something that we, we could have put on that. I'm just trying to think. Future that's in our lake, it's kind of in our lake district that joins our seventy acres that we currently have. And people are currently using. So, you know, that's why I thought it was important that we put it on the agenda and just discuss.
That's, is that subdividable? Scott, do you know? You said.
There was two, there was two entrances off of Merritt Valley, yeah.
No, the, for that, for that parcel that's for sale?
Yeah, there's two accesses, yeah.
So they're looking at, they're looking at, they could do two lots?
I, I'm not sure. I, I didn't, I didn't get into it with the realtor with that. He just, he just said that they're taking test pits. I'm assuming they're going to put, they're probably going to put a couple houses in there, I would assume.
Well, the reason I'm asking is you said that it went through. It went through getting looked at. Wasn't that part of the equation when, when people came up with a value number?
They, they came up with a hundred thousand dollars, which. No, no, that wasn't. They just, they just came up with that as far. What they thought it was value to the town was the only a hundred thousand dollars.
It's three thousand dollars acre.
As far as open space, as far as open space goes, I guess.
Well, no, but so are you saying that when we evaluate parcels, we don't take into account the, the realtor value of it? We only appraise the open space value?
Yeah, I, I would, that, that's what the conservation commission did. And the planning and zoning commission said, I think they, we said, no, the planning and zoning said a hundred and conservation said a hundred and five or so, I think.
So, so I can clarify.
Please, because I'm baffled at this.
The planning and zoning commission looks at a parcel and looks at the totality of a parcel. Relative to the town's open space needs. And makes a decision whether a parcel is worth it to the town to own irrespective of what the cost of the parcel is. You know, it doesn't matter what the development. Costs or the development value with that property. It only matters to the commission what the value is for the town. You know, in the, the, the planning and zoning commission with the concurrence of the conservation commission looked at it and said. We don't want to try to acquire this property. If it's going to take us more than about a hundred and thousand dollars out of our open space fund to do it. That's what they've decided. Right or wrong, that was their decision.
But was there any consideration to what Jeff brought up tonight that that became? That took a parcel that currently is really unusable and made it usable for the town? I mean, you could, even if you acquired the parcel and then rezone and then, you know, readjusted the lot lines. You could give yourself the access that you need and then sell the rest.
Adrian, don't come after me. This is not a decision by me. This was a decision by two commissions, which I serve on neither of them.
No, I, I'm not. I'm asking if, if that, so that's not ever a consideration in those two, in those two bodies.
They're, they're only addressing exactly what.
No.
They're only addressing exactly what Eric said, open space.
Remember, remember too, Adrian, that the only thing those two commissions and really it's the zoning commission. Has to work with is the open space fund. And if they bought that with the open space fund, you would not be putting a road in. You would not be subdividing that property because. You would not be subdividing that property because you would then be prohibited by law from doing that. Um, you would be able to put in recreational amenities, but that's it. Because that's what, what's allowed under the open space, you know, statutes. So it's not like they can say, oh, well, we'll buy it for a hundred grand. We'll subdivide off this piece. We'll keep this piece. They don't have that flexibility. If you wanted to do that, you would have had to, the board of selectmen would have had to pony up. Go back to the town and say, we want to take a hundred thousand dollars out of something. Or a hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, and we want to buy it to do this with it.
So there's no structure available within the open space for pulling parcels out and then, and then putting back on the market?
Not when it's bought with those funds.
No, which, which is why when we acquired the property. Uh, for, you know, we, we played some legal tricks to acquire the property on Lake Road to do just that. To basically, because there were multiple parcels there and we got them to donate. A couple of the parcels in exchange for us paying too much for one of the parcels. Because that gave us the flexibility later, you know, to sell off one of those parcels later.
Okay.
This, this goes into a charter revision and giving the board of selectmen an opportunity to sit there and make a decision like Jeff is bringing up. And finding a pot of money that would allow us to have bought that without having to go back to a town meeting. And sat there and explained to everyone why we're choosing to do it and then have people vote no. I mean, twenty seven, twelve Center Street is the exact example of.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could have our own pot. And, and it's not to abuse the situation. It's only to make a, a prudent business decision on behalf of the town.
But I just came, I came to the game late. I wish I would have known about this. Back in February, March, because I would have definitely pursued it being on the, uh, building committee.
Scott, Scott did bring the.
Think it was a win-win. I think we kind of missed a great opportunity by, uh, looking at the, purchasing that property.
I did, Jeff. I looked at it with the planning, zoning and conservation commission for six months.
Yeah, I just never heard about it. I never, I was never informed. I didn't know anything about it. So. And then I saw that I was down there walking and I saw the for sale signs. And I looked up the property and I saw that it boarded all our, uh, uh, town property behind the school and it would have given us a hundred acre parcel back there.
Exactly. Am I missing something? But are, are we getting reports or updates from these commissions on major things like this that happen?
We don't get reports from all of the commissions.
I mean, I think this was important enough that we should have been, you know, informed of it.
Well, I, I'll flat out tell you, Jeff, we were informed. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, I mean, I know that Scott was working on this. You know, six months ago, eight months ago, when it first went on the market and we had conversations as to open space related. You know, we could have had the conversation as a board as to buy the, the property, but we never had the direct conversation of buying the property to. Other than for open space purposes, because that's all it had been brought up.
Yeah, I, I, I don't remember conversations specifically about Maravalle.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't either.
Sorry, I mean, uh, listen.
That was.
It would have been, it would have been almost impossible. Well, I shouldn't say anything. With this board, things are not impossible. But it would have been almost impossible for us to get approval to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars or. I believe that's what he was asking for, Scott, in the beginning was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, something in that ballpark.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
And then the owner reduced it by, I think fifteen or twenty for the town to keep it as open space.
If I remember correctly, Scott went to ask him to donate the property to the town.
Right, exactly. First, I, I.
Good for you, Scott.
And he refused. So then it was a question of money. And then Scott had gone in and said, okay, if we got it for open space, what would you be willing to deal with? And, and the board said a hundred. And if I remember correctly, Scott, he was like, I'm not going to reduce the price.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Now, Jeff, I agree with you. Like, I would love to have made a business deal. Just like we should have done with twelve Center Street. We should have made calculated. Understanding of what was right for the town long term, not today, not.
Exactly.
And that's what I'm thinking long term. I'm not thinking maybe ten years and maybe even twenty years down the road. Having for housing, we may have a need for more senior housing. We, it would have been a perfect, uh, opportunity to, uh, place it in that area.
Exactly. And then our, our town administrator will all look at us and go. It's a long-term, long, long-term, long, long-term proposition to get the money to fund what we would like to do.
Even if you needed a space for a well, septic system or something for the school, any of those things, it would have been ideal for.
Okay, well, it, here's, here's the bigger picture that we keep talking about what a town center looks like, right? You know, that, if you put that together with the seventy acres that you have and you have a hundred acre parcel. Now you've got a town center, you've got town-centered recreation, you've got town center, you know, everything's, you know, coalesced in one area.
Based off the survey, people overwhelmingly wanted that as the town center.
Right. And, and I, and I brought up the whole plan of consti- well, I, I, I worked on that for a lot, a lot of time. To try to get it pushed through, but could not get anybody to.
I would have known, I would have been an ally.
Okay. Well, uh, Scott, if the, uh, real estate agent tells you it falls through, please bring it back to the board.
Yeah, can we keep, can we keep, please keep our eye on that piece of property and just see, just in case?
Okay, um, shared service agreement for the building officially went over that, Eric. Do you have anything else we need to talk about?
Nope.
Okay, oh. We don't, are we not approving that tonight? We're going to read that and get back to you. Is it okay if we all text you, email you, call you?
Um, I think technically that one you guys have to approve officially. If you waited another month, you could wait another month, I guess, but.
Okay, well, which contractor were you going to approve then, Eric?
I, the only one you have to approve is the one that covers us through July one. Because without that, we technically don't have a building official. But I would say, yeah, that's the only one you technically have to approve. But is there a reason you don't want to approve them both?
Um, if it was me, I'd like to sit there and look at that agreement for longer, especially the, the two-year agreement. I don't necessarily have a problem agreeing to it, but.
Eric, Eric doesn't want us to see contracts tonight. I've gotten a little weary of this.
You've had this contract. This is not, you know, new territory here.
You're like Trump Junior tonight.
Ouch.
Good thing Amanda's running the meeting, because I would have muted you for that comment. Maybe even put you back in the waiting room.
Almost like Dan in your Twitter account. What are you gonna do? Hey, let's move on. So, so are we going to approve these, these contracts for the building? Is there something we can do interim to, to keep the services going until, until next month till we can all read these contracts? Is there a resol- is there something we can do?
Let's, I've, listen, I'll make a motion to approve the, the contract from today through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Second it.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Eric, we'll read the next one and a vote on it next meeting.
Okay.
You don't need that. We don't need that. Uh, we did J. Budget planning, recommended capital fund allocations. And employee compensation and annual raises.
So, two things. One, I put in your packet. The recommended capital fund allocation, which is basically what I presented to you, uh, last year with a few more details. The reason why I gave that to you is because I think CIP, for CIP to plan for what capital purchases. They're going to want to do, they really need to understand what the funding level is that will be available for them. So that's why I provided that to you. Um, if that's something that, uh, whatever feedback you have on that. Would be appreciated in terms of where you as a board want to go with that.
Okay, does the board have any questions of Eric related to the allocation for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget? Eric, do you know how much the total allocation is increasing from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one?
So, yes, if you look on that first column, that first count, column that says amount twenty twenty. That's what we actually put in the funds last year as amended by the board of finance who went back and added money to it. From the surplus from last year. So as you remember, when we modified the budget to present to the board of finance, we had trimmed. Pretty dramatically the capital request from last year from the first budget to the one that got presented to board of finance. To the numbers in that column.
So my quick math is like eighty thousand dollar increase?
Uh, I think it's more than that.
Up thirty, ups, up ninety, or up eighty, excuse me. One thirty, down to ninety, up to one thirty. The, the roadwork fund is, was three fifty, it's going to be three hundred thousand?
So it was three hu- the border, the last budget was three hundred thousand. However, because we ran a pretty significant surplus last year. At the end of the year, we did budget transfer, additional budget transfers of fifty thousand dollars into that account. So that was three hundred thousand last year. We add, it's three hundred thousand this year. Because we had a surplus, we dumped some of the extra surplus in that.
Okay, but we really need to look at it as to how much more we're going to try to, uh, request in a budget in total. So if you could get us that number so that I could know like how much more money that capital request is for. I, I'm willing to sit there and support all of them. I don't think there's a problem with any of them. I probably think your bridge and culvert fund is low, but that's me.
It is low, but, I mean, the, the question is how much can we really add? You know, the, the difference is last year we had quite a bit of unexpended fund balance. Um, and repurposed funds, we transferred into the general fund to fund some of this. So this year, pretty much all of it would come from taxation. Therefore, there's going to be a big. You know, effectively, even if the budget doesn't increase, the effect on the taxpayer is a fairly significant increase.
What are, what are you looking for, three, three and change?
I think the increase is really about a hundred and thirty thousand if you take the road work out. So.
And how much did we have that we didn't? I guess what I'm asking is. What is the actual increase in taxation effects total on the new?
I think that's the number, one thirty. But listen, listen, we don't, we do not have to discuss this in totality right now. We could do this in our budget workshops. Because this is going to be something we all have to look at.
One thing I'd like to break, bring up is that, you know, the new, the new softball field down there, Jeff. I don't, you know, I don't know if you wanted to talk about this at some point.
Well, it's something that we should sit there and think about what we're trying to, what we would want to do with it, but. You know, I think we have a lot of problems that we have to address. So, um.
I, I, can I just kind of get a lay of the land? My thought press, like my bigger thought process on dealing with some of our shortfalls, because. Addressing some of our shortfalls sooner rather than later saves us money in the long run, right? And given the rate, the interest rates being as low as they are right now. Has there been any thought process, or what would the, as a, would the board be open to looking at bonding? You know, putting together a bond package for some of the roadwork, some of the bigger capital? Or are we still wanting to get another year out from COVID before we start talking about that? We've got one more year before the RAM bond pays out. That's going to affect the school a little bit, but our indication, for, all indications say that the, the RAM board. Is going to try to take that money and put it into something else that we really won't see it.
Listen, I, I think as a board, we should really look at that and we should look at what the cost would be because. In my mind, if we could sit there and give the residents a, a number. That this is the number, we're going to keep coming back to this number for the next ten to fifteen years. I have no problem doing that. I have no problem showing it to the residents too, to say, listen, we'd like to, we'd like to do this or I'll support that agent. So.
Any thoughts from anyone else? Eric, Scott, Paula, Jeff?
When is that, when's the RAM gonna, when's the RAM, uh, increase gonna start, uh, dropping?
Next, well, this year into next year.
Yeah, we got like, we got about two more years of that increase.
Yeah, but so what's going to end up happening though is. There's also the bond is finally going to be paid off. The bond stushin', they paid off. The bond, the first tier bond payments dropped by one point five million. When that happens.
I'm talking about our levy. I'm talking about the levy that we have now.
But the levy is related to both students and, and bond payout. And it should come down based on that alone. So.
I'd like this, to funnel the money that we're spending to RAM. I'd like to funnel that into roadwork if we could in the next, in the coming years.
Yeah.
Well, the question, the question.
So the residents don't see a big bump in taxes.
But if we could, if, if we could bond it out, and let's say it's one mil, one mil over ten years. You know? Or a mil and a half over ten years, but it gives us the money now to move that forward. You know, the, a bunch of these projects and, you know, you could look at the difference in the community center building. You could look at the roadwork projects and the next fire truck and say, we're gonna, we're gonna bond for these three things all at once.
Yeah, I guess we have to figure out how much roadwork we can possibly get done in a year. I mean, I don't know.
But you don't have to spend bond money in one year.
Oh, that's, but the thing is, I want to make sure that we have a plan for spending that money.
Yeah, but I, I guess my point is you.
Can you come up with that plan here?
And I, I don't want to be paying interest on money that we're not doing work with. That's the problem. I don't want to bond for all the money, pay interest on money we're just holding on to.
It doesn't, I, I understand that, but like the fire truck, you can't go get it. It takes, it's going to be a year before you actually pay the bill. But you can't go get it till you've got the money. The, the roadwork, you can't contract out until you have deposit money. And that, then you're, you know, six months, a year out on bigger projects, you know? So all of it has to be tied into a longer term plan and it could be two or even three years before you spend down the whole bond fund. But because of the size of our needs, we don't have enough. We don't have enough money if we do any, any of these projects individually is not enough to justify a bond. You'd have to do it through tax implications. If you put them all together, now you have enough money to go to the bond. And, and, and coalesce them all together and make something work. But individually, they don't justify a bond is the problem.
Okay, so globally, we, we would all agree, or we should all agree that we could look at this. We really need to what the interest rate is on the bond and what type of bond we go out and get.
Right.
What's evaluated? There's, there's nothing wrong with evaluating that information and trying to determine if it makes sense.
Unfortunately, this was something I had been really pushing Barbara on for over a year and got nowhere. I tried to get her to reach out to banks. I tried her to get, to bring banks in. I asked her to reach out to. Um, Hebron, because they had just gone through something similar and I got nowhere. So.
Dennis O'Brien, where is Wyndham getting their bond funding from?
I'm not exactly sure, but we're.
I'm not exactly sure, but we're doing a lot of bonding. We've been doing an awful lot of Jim Rivers, the town manager in Wyndham. Eric could talk to him. Adrian, you could talk to him. He's very, very. Easy to, easy to access. He lo, he loves to talk this stuff, he has a background in finance, one of the reasons we hired him. And ever since he's come to town, as you know, Adrian, we're doing a lot of construction projects in town.
Yeah.
We've been bonding a lot because the interest rates are incredibly low.
And that's the thing, it, now is, if you're gonna do anything, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, I'd love to see that new softball field in Andover so I can bring my girls team down there to beat you guys again.
That, that's why I want to get it done for you, Dennis.
We play in Hebron most of the time.
Well, you know, Dennis, over in Andover, we're not like Wyndham, we're progressive, we have a, we have a, we have a mixed team, so.
What did you just say?
We have a, we have a coed team.
What is that, coed for people your age?
Right, we don't call, we don't call it, we don't call it coed because that's, that's not the right term.
No, my team is just little girls in there, 10, 11, 11 and 12 year olds, I'll be moving up to major league next year.
Well, Adrian, we should look at it, let's take a look at it, let's sit there and see if we can find out some information and. You know, it's definitely outside of the comfort zone for all of the residents in the town of Andover, but.
Want me to hook you up with, with Jim Rivers, Adrian?
Please.
Okay, that would be a good, you guys have worked well together.
Adrian, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I love it myself from, you know, being from out in left field here.
Okay, where were we? What texture, where are we on there?
9D.
Budget planning, we did that. Why employee compensation annual raises, Eric? Should we address that during our budget cycles or what?
So, I just want to remind the board that one of the things that you have a statutory obligation to do. Is to set the compensation for employees that don't have existing contractual agreements. So not union people and not the people that are elected officials. So the remainder of that group, you set the, the salary and benefits for. So my first question is, do you guys have a target that you're trying to achieve?
That's progressive.
They got to work from home this year, they saved on gas money.
Eric, we'll sit there and do that in our budget workshops, but one question is. Contracts that need to be written for July 1st, I'm assuming your contract is in that category, accurate?
Technically, my contract is up August something.
Are there any other contracts that this board needs to sit there and be thinking about before July 1st?
So, at this point. No, the only contract you could consider would be an actual formal contract for. Amy or Lemovski in the, at the library.
Okay. Okay, so.
Well, back up, Eric's is up in August for budgeting, do we need to have a conversation about that?
Yeah. It might be up in August, but we should write it for a July 1 timeline.
All right, so we're going for zero on that too, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Knowing you, sure.
He's terrible.
I'm just upfront.
Getting it out there.
Right, just trying to get your expectations where they need to be.
Eric, Eric is, is, is deserving of everything that this board can bring to him.
We'll buy, we'll pay for the shirts next year, how's that?
And a coat if you want.
And a coat.
I'm gonna give him the, the color of the rainbow.
Actually, no, all kidding aside, Eric. Given how much you are out and exposed and, and you know, with. Even just going around with the road crew and stuff, you should look at getting one of those reflective coats when Public Works puts one in for yourself.
Well, I mean, I carry a reflective vest with me at all times.
Yeah, that's not the point, we, if you're gonna get hit, we'd at least like you to have a logo on you when you get struck.
Right, so they know where to take the body?
Well, or who to, who to pay out your, your, your employee unused sick time to. No, you should have one, I'm being totally serious, you should have one of those coats.
I actually agree with Adrian on this one.
So we can take you to the pit, Eric.
No, I mean, it's a.
That's what he's saying, when you get hit.
It's just a safety issue, it should be the same with the inspectors and everything else that are out.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I agree with you guys.
So, so back up, we are going ahead with the, the town crew. So two things, one, I bought Jay a series of these shirts, but in, you know, international safety green. So you'll be able to see him a mile away, it'll look professional, it'll be a logoed shirt, but it will be bright green. We are buying the Public Works crew. Logoed bomber jackets with the retro reflective stuff all over them. Because that's something I wanted Eddie to get last year, but you know, Eddie being Eddie, thought it was a bad idea for some reason. Not sure exactly why. Jay and I discussed that early on and, and that was one of my goals is to get high reflective. You know, outfits so that they don't get run over because it's really expensive when your employees get run down.
So here's another question I'm gonna throw out there because I don't know. I think you should have one, both so that you look professional and you are safe, you know, whether it's. Out helping, doing traffic with the voting or whatever, I, I, I think it's appropriate. But given that generally the more you order, the better the pricing is. Does Cert or anybody else have those jackets and if not, should we consider doing that for Cert?
I don't know what Cert has, I mean, Cert has a bunch of stuff, but what exactly, I don't know, they get a bunch of.
I've seen them, they wear, they wear them, they have reflective vests.
Okay.
I know they have some, some of the full on re- reflective. Cold weather gear, but I don't know necessarily whether all of them do or not.
Anybody doing inspections or working on behalf of the town should have some kind of safety gear and logo, logo shirts or jackets.
Yeah, and, and listen, given that Cert's volunteers, I mean, gosh, it's probably the least we can do for them, so, you know. Can we talk to somebody over at Cert?
Yep.
I just feel like volunteers in this town have been underappreciated for way too long. I don't want to throw them a party, you know, I want to do something for them, so.
Okay, so Eric, please look into that and provide back. A quote so that we can sit there and get it done, just do it. Don't, I don't want to have another conversation in another meeting about reflective jackets. So please get the reflective jackets for yourself and see if Cert has any money in their budget and then let's sit there and do that for them as well because.
Well, and if, if they don't, let's find the money in the town budget.
Let's go. Okay. There is now. Our timeline on our board of select and the budget adoption and the schedule for workshops. Anybody have any? Timeline they'd like to put out, like when we should start meeting?
I mean, you really ought to plan on a couple of budget meetings between now and February 1st. And running a budget to Board of Finance somewhere around early February.
Okay. It's January 11th, so do we want to start meeting? Is there, I would assume we'd still do it by Zoom, we would have a meetings. Anybody have a problem with Wednesdays or how, how often do you want to do this?
Wednesdays are generally not great for me.
Okay, Thursdays? Anybody have any recommendations?
Are Tuesdays an option?
Tuesday is always an option. Good. How about we email out a schedule and we sit there and try to get everybody to buy into it and Eric will post that up. On the town calendar after we get. Enough buy-in from the rest of the members.
And we do it as a Survey Monkey schedule or something?
If it was me, I would do it on Tuesdays and we would do it each Tuesday until we feel comfortable that we've gone through everything.
What about the, what about the 19th and 26th?
Well, you need more than two days.
Well, we were really, Eric was like telling us to start in February, are you prepared for us to start meeting now, Eric?
After Thursday, I mean, you know, we have enough to start a discussion on the 12th. Tomorrow, if you're ready to go for that, sure, why not, what the hell?
All right, so I like Scott's idea, the 19th and the 26th?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Seven o'clock. Eric, if you could put those on the calendar.
Okay.
Okay, item 10 is the approval of the minute meetings or the, the meeting minutes for the December 14th regular meeting. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the minutes? Want to make motion to approve those?
Motion to approve the minutes as, as presented?
A second.
Right, for the discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We were all provided information from the finance department, Eric in his email provided us. A cleaner copy. There are any questions related to the information? Besides which month this was for?
Did I put the wrong month on it?
No, it's covered up by the PDF complete information. Eric, are there anything, is there anything that we should look at specifically that you want to direct us to?
So if you, there's two things on this one that you will see if you look at your budget workshop. The first is, we had a little, we incorrectly assigned a bunch of. Cost from the salary line item for Public Works, which should have been in the. The permanent fund for employee payoffs essentially. So we've corrected that, I went over that and corrected that with Marina. Basically, we had to do a journal entry because Barbara incorrectly booked it. So in, in, I, I freaked out a little bit when I saw that original budget because we were. We jumped from about 40% expended in Public Works to like 65%. In one, you know, two week increment, which obviously was a little unrealistic. So we've corrected it, we're in reasonably good shape on Public Works as I've talked to you about before. I allowed them to go over on the temp help because we were using Richard Bagan. And because we hadn't, you know, we, we didn't want to permanently hire until we had an actual completion date for Eddie. So we basically used him as a temp help as opposed to taking his salary out of the general line item for Public Works. We did run over pretty considerably in overtime this fall. Two reasons for that. One, we've had a ton of storm related stuff, it's like every time the wind blows. You know, we end up with Public Works out in the middle of the night cleaning up roads because we've had a ton of closures, so that's been part of it. And the second part of it is as we've done roadwork, a lot of the roadwork contractors, they don't work nice neat eight hour days. They tend to work long days and we end up in the end of the day running two or three hours overtime. For the road guards because we typically use our Public Works employees to supply. So we don't have to pay independent flaggers. So, you know, but overall, we're fine right now on salary for Public Works. It's just that we've gone over in those two, but we were well under in the standard line item for salary. Now, as we get into the spring, because Jay makes considerably more than Eddie did. We're gonna be a little over at the end of the year, but not much over. So that's the only one I really wanted to bring to your attention on the major part of the budget.
Are we still, are we still isolating? I didn't think, but we're, we're not separating snow, are we still?
Yes.
Okay, so, but we, so our overtime may be offset because generally this time of year. Where we are in January, we would generally be a little more expended on snow, snow bunny.
Yeah, so far we're doing okay on snow removal, we had that one really long storm, but other than that, we've been doing. It hasn't been too big a deal. The other thing is if you look down in the budget, there's a series of appropriation transfers. That have come up, most of them you don't have to weigh in on. The, the ones you should probably approve and ultimately it's Board of Finance, it has to have the final approval. Because they're over $5,000 and that is the temp line item for temporary labor for Public Works. And then the overtime for Public Works. Those, and I put those two over expenditures in your packet.
Do you need a BOF referral?
No, technically what has to happen is the Board of Selectmen has to. You know, approve and then it goes to Board of Finance.
Referral, you need us to approve it so it can go to Board of Finance?
Correct, correct.
Would you like us to do that now?
That would be good.
I make a motion that we refer the, the, how many do you have? Three?
There's, I think there's only. Two, the only two that you need to deal with as a board are the. Of budget account number 0301-111 and 0301-112. Those are the only two.
I would make a motion then to refer those two account numbers as noted by Eric to the Board of Finance. Approving and then moving to the Board of Finance for final approval.
I'll check it down.
For the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else there, Eric?
No, that's, unless you have more questions for me about where we are, we're actually in, in really good shape overall on the budget.
Did we have any COVID money coming in?
Yes.
We do, we do, we've got one allotment of around seven grand that we've gotten in. We have one coming in that should be around 21 and change.
Primarily for hours, work hours or?
So this is where it gets a little stupid. So what happened was.
How about the short version?
So what we're going to do is we booked it against the resident trooper's salary. And then then we've reassigned the excess from the resident trooper's salary into whatever we want to spend it on. That's the short version.
Okay.
Any other questions related to that? And Eric, just so everyone understands, you got a small amount and you're getting a larger amount and that was 21,000 or is that what the 55,000 was?
No, the 55,000 is what, what we're getting back from LoSIP. So we agreed to do the paving, the repaving at the transfer station using LoSIP funds. We, we paid for it out of the roadwork budget initially and we're getting refunded from LoSIP, but we don't have that yet.
Okay, so that was the other number, all right.
Wait, one more question, finance. The situation that we ran into this spring with the. The. The wrong transfer, has that been addressed? With Kerma and the. With Kerma and the, um, our account, our, um, auditor?
That has not been finally addressed yet. That is still in the works.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, since we already went through 12 in the budget and the appropriation transfers, we're good with that. The tax collector's report? There wasn't any tax collector's report? Were there refund requests?
There were no refund requests.
Okay. I like that. The assessors report, you've provided an update. I mean, how, on the revaluation services, how far complete or what's our percentage of completion?
Um, I asked that. I didn't get a firm number, but I think they're more than two-thirds of the way done at this point.
And with the exception of, uh, Board Member Mandeville, has everyone else here had anyone stop by their house or drop off a flyer or do anything else?
Twice. Two times.
Two times for you. Paula, for you?
Oh, that, the, the question is for you.
Question is for you. Why? Do you know something I don't know, Adrian?
I may have sent them down to your house because I, I know that we need to get more taxes out of you.
I, I had, I had a very pleasant experience, no issues.
Okay, and Jeff, you?
Haven't seen the revale yet.
I had no issues whatsoever. They drove up to the house. Uh, they had identified themselves. They had vests on. They had identification. I told them to freely walk the property. Had nothing to hide.
Paula was trying to hide her pool. She's walking around with a bush trying to hide it.
Oh, we, we had some wrong info, so I'm, I'm glad they stopped by and he was very
Added that big pool?
Wow, no wonder why our meeting was so short last month. You just got to add every little comment.
We all know why the meeting was short last month, don't we?
Because nothing got done.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so Department reports. The only report that I had questions on really was the resident state trooper report. Eric, can you find out? And, and next meeting, just report back when, when non-reportable matters are put onto this report, 121. Can you get a breakdown of kind of what they represent? I'm assuming there are interactions that the state trooper has with residents, but please find out.
I mean, I can tell you generally that for anything the, the state police get called to an event, but nothing happens. They don't arrest anybody or actually do anything.
So it's not just our trooper, it's the barracks total?
Yes, correct.
So we may not be able to get a breakdown, Jeff?
That's the barracks total or?
No, barracks total.
People from Andover called 153 times?
Yes. Yes.
Could, does it include contacting him on Facebook and calling the phone number too? Like I've contacted him on Facebook. Does that count as a report non-reportable matter? So like, this, you know?
Yeah, just find out. I mean, I'm just interested in it because you know, there's three accidents and, uh, two other criminal, criminal issues and three non-criminal issues and 153 non-reportable matters.
Well, Jeff texted him 53 times, so there's only 100 reportable matters.
It's fine. At least Jeff wastes his own time, right Paula? Alright.
Alright, I'm staying out of it.
Any other questions, any other questions, uh, related to anything else here? Building department had a total net income of 12.
I just have one question. I don't know if this falls under department reports, but I just wanted to ask Eric during this meeting. The issue with the line painting and the cars get, uh, settled? Has that kind of gone away?
They haven't got back to me. I, I told them I was willing to give them a couple hundred bucks, but
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that issue's been resolved and we don't have any ongoing problems.
I mean, I suspect they have an ongoing problem with the town, but they haven't asked me. I, I agreed to pay out a couple hundred bucks to settle it, but, but, um, I haven't heard back from either.
Okay, just, just wondering. Did we lose Jeff?
Alright, motion to adjourn?
We have to do public speak.
Nice try, Adrian.
So we, we really should, um, hopefully you've all had a chance to look through the AHM agreement.
Sorry about that. Okay, back at it. Are there any other questions? And Eric, there is one thing on the, uh, there does appear to be some, uh, refunds for the tax collector. They're posted on page 78 of our package. Just make sure that we don't need to do something with that this month.
Oh, I missed them.
I thought there was three or four of them.
If there is, I missed it. Um,
Where are you seeing them?
Say that again?
I'm sorry, where are you seeing them?
Uh, it looks like a page 78. Uh, you know, that they may not be tax collector issue. They may be assessors issues. So maybe that's my mistake.
Oh, okay.
But I would assume the assessor passes it on to the tax collector and then tax collector processes the, the refunds. So it might just be that the assessor sent it to the tax collector's office and the tax collector's office didn't process the refunds for this month. So we should make sure what we need to do. Um, are there any other issues that someone wants to address? Related to the other reports?
So the one we do need to deal with is AHM, if you've all had a chance to read that agreement.
Well, I mean, I read that, but you know, is there anything that, so we, they want to know, they want us to sign this agreement between the town and RAM. And when is their expectation of getting it back?
Uh, I mean, they would like it sooner rather than later.
Alright, so can we read it and vote on this at the beginning of the next meeting? I'm assuming no one else on our board read it in any detail. Okay, so we're going to bring this back up next meeting. And we will get it done for the next meeting, Eric.
Okay, I, I mean, I will tell you that that will be, uh, yeah, they'll deal with it.
Eric, I, I mean, I, I skimmed it here while we were looking, reading it. Is there any issues with it that you see?
No, I, I honestly think that so the, the, the group has gone back and forth about how you fairly evaluate the three towns relative to the amount of services that are provided. So the, if, if you remember historically, if you go back five years, it just went off of census population data. And then somebody decided that wasn't fair and they decided it should be relative to the, uh, number of um, students combined in RAM, basically between the high school and the elementary school. So they changed that to that formula. And then, you know, um, Marlboro decided, well, A-Town decided it was unfair to use that valuation. Um, in part because it fluctuated a lot from year to year. So people's bills would go up and down and up and down from year to year. Um, so there was another formula floated that was basically total student enrollment, you know, as one factor. And then the second factor is total census population. And then the third factor was just the number of students in the high school, in the elementary school or high school in the middle school, which I thought was kind of stupid because it double counted the students from the high school and middle school. So we eventually have settled on a formula which is basically equal weighting between the census population of, of the three towns respectively and the number of students K through 12 that are actually enrolled somewhere.
And how does that affect our number?
It doesn't make a damn bit of difference, which is why this has been frustrating to me because all three formulas basically return exactly the same valuations for all three towns. So we're arguing over really stupid things because it doesn't change anything.
So is there any reason that we shouldn't accept the agreement as is?
No.
Motion to accept agreement for AHM as noted. Anyway.
I'll second it. Uh, Dennis O'Brien has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, nobody asked me to read it, but I did read it and I thought it was pretty good. And the only questions I had were Eric covered. It was about the, how much, you know, how much it's going to cost. And, uh, I even looked at the CIRC reports on all three towns. You know, and obviously you're going to be paying less based on those reports. Based on K through 12, you're much, you're smaller than Marlboro and quite a bit smaller than Hebron. I'm just wondering how much you've been paying in the past? For this service.
So, um, it's, I, I want to say it's around 49,000, something in that range. But I think we pay, but that's just the, that's just what I see because the elementary school has charged separately. Now, what I will say is there is up for discussion. The, they've been deciding what's the fairest way to bill the towns and whether they bill the towns essentially one bill or whether they continue to bill the primary school and the town separately. Because, you know, that hasn't really been decided yet. But that doesn't matter because that doesn't change the actual amount the taxpayers pay. It just means whether it's baked into the elementary school bill or it's baked into the town's bill.
You happy with the services you're getting?
Yeah.
Is this really extensive? I mean, I, I, I have a lot of experience with social services, human services, youth services bureaus. My days as a legal aid lawyer, I, I'm just wondering what kind of, what kind of services you're getting. Are they good? Are they expensive?
Does, does AHM with all of the census information they deal by population, does AHM provide information as to how much services are used by town?
Good question.
Um, I think they, I have not seen the breakdown from this year. Last year, they provided a list of the services specifically to each town.
Do they serve as like a youth services bureau for your town?
That's exactly what they are. They are Andover's youth services.
A YSB. Well, that's an important service. It isn't, it isn't Wyndham for sure. I mean, so I, I assume it is just about everywhere, but you know, we have different kinds of needs.
Alright, so, uh, Eric, uh, before we vote on this, uh, in the future, under department reports, maybe we can ask AHM if they do have a breakdown of how much the services have been utilized by Andover's residents. That would be tremendous.
You know, and I, I would like to know if I were you, how much the other towns are paying? You know, in total and also, you know, to the elementary school and whatnot.
So Dennis, Andover's fraction of the total budget is 16%.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's what, that's about what it should be.
But, but that's just, that's just the part they, because remember they get a lot of outside funding. The towns provide roughly a third of their total funding, um, of which Andover pays 16% of one-third of the total funding.
Well, if they're doing a good job and they're meeting the needs of your people, that's a pretty, that's a pretty good price.
Okay.
Price that you stated before, based on my, my awareness of, of social services, which is, I have a lot of experience in that regard.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have any other questions, board members? No? Alright, so, um, call the vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Eric, you can get that passed on to AHM.
Happy Eric.
I am.
You're welcome.
Assuming there's no correspondence.
Not that I'm aware of.
Public speak?
Yeah, I'll bring something up if, uh, if I could.
Hey, Mark.
Hey guys, how you doing?
Mark.
I just, just wanted to comment on the, uh, you know, discussion we had a little bit earlier about, uh, about bonding. I, I, I think that given the situation and the timing and the needs of the town, um, that it would be prudent for the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, Finance Department, and, uh, the Board of Finance Representatives to kind of maybe get together and come up with a plan. And I hate to add committees or meetings or anything else to these kind of things, but honestly, if we don't have that kind of thing addressed and, and, and have some understanding gained by, I think certainly on the Board of Finance, but also probably in the Board of Selectmen and other, other avenues, that it would just be prudent for us to find out more about that early so that we know what our options are and everyone understands what the trade-offs are, et cetera. So just, just a comment about, uh, how we might approach that. Sooner rather than later would be prudent.
Yeah, I mean, listen, Mark, I've been asking about this for a while. Um, I, I will try to get what information I can from Wyndham. I will encourage our new finance person coming in um, to, to get as much information as they can. And obviously Eric's going to reach out. I, I don't know that we can pull something together for this budget. I would love to see us pull something together for this budget, but if we do, certainly that's going to include bringing in a bank and, or somebody to explain to both the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, which I would hope would probably be a joint meeting, um, to explain the implications of this and, and what the long-term. And, and obviously I'd like to record that Zoom so we can put it out there for residents as well, so, you know?
Yeah, agreed. I mean, I, I don't, I don't foresee this happening in this budget cycle. It's just way too short a time period, unfortunately, but
You never know. You never know. I mean, if we can, if we can get the town to a, a, approve, I mean, it, basically you come up with a number, you come up with a rate, you come up with a, you know, a bonding package and you know what it's going to specifically. And if now's the time to do it, which I personally believe it is, um, we kind of have an idea of what we need. It's just a matter of what it's going to cost us. So, you know, how much can we put into that? And come up with a number that we can live with, you know? And whether that's prudent or not is, is the next conversation, but
Got it. Agreed. Okay.
Shannon? Do you have anything to add?
Yes, that's why I'm wearing my hat.
Let's go.
So before I, before I break into song, which I hope will be a unique event in Board of Selectmen history, um, two things, seriously. Um, I sent the agreement and the draft contract for, well, actually the contract for Agata uh, to all of you. Dennis, I don't have your email, I didn't have your email handy. So I'm asking somebody on the Board of Selectmen to send it to you. Um, we especially need to hear back from you ASAP because the contract has already gone out to Agata. She simply hasn't signed it yet. So need to hear back from you guys. Um, second of all, I meant to say it earlier when I was being more serious. Um, I very, very much would like to see the town of Andover no longer have May municipal elections. I would very much like us to see go to alternating Novembers and save the town a lot of money. Get voter turnout up like we saw this past November, blah, da, blah, da, blah. And I don't know how that needs to occur, so I'm putting it before the Board of Selectmen. I believe it needs to occur by referendum. And, and hold on, Adrian, do not interrupt me.
Charter revision.
And, and a town charter change. But I'm putting it out there because it needs to happen. It's needed to happen for years and I want it to be done. And finally, I hope you will all join in reminiscent of December 19th. Because there is a very important event occurring this Thursday, January 14th. For one of your fellow members. So everybody join in.
Uter.
Happy birthday to you. I can't hear you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Paula.
Happy birthday.
Moving on.
Oh, oh, that was not me.
Moving on.
That is so cruel. That is so cruel. I can't, I, words fail me right now, so I'm going to mute myself.
The singing was cruel. The singing was cruel.
My singing is fantastic, Adrian. You, you would have to pay typically for my singing, okay?
The singing didn't bother me, the hat did. So anyway, are we all?
Good job Shannon, thank you. Thank you.
Paula, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you Shannon. That was very kind of you.
Paula, I, I'm sorry that your birthday was outed like that. I, I, I apologize on behalf of the board. It's not fair. Women of your age should not be, shouldn't be discussed.
So Paula, just, just for posterity, when, when is your birthday exactly?
You don't have to tell anybody, Paula, keep it to yourself.
Birthday is Thursday, January fourteenth.
Intrusions are not appropriate.
Be forty four young years old, my goodness gracious.
That is not nice. That is not nice.
Hey, I'm fifty, gotta be fifty eight. It is darn nice.
That's quite all right. I accept any gifts. My address is on record, so if you would like to send um checks. Feel free, drop off gifts, okay? Thank you Shannon, it was very lovely of you.
Okay, now you're in the calendar forever, Paula. Thank you, thank you Shannon for letting me know. Um, is there anything else that we need to do with, uh, is anyone else that wants to participate in public speak? Amanda, you're good?
Anybody else's birthdays we need to sing for?
Uh, I know that your birthday is.
We're gonna forget one that's gonna occur before the next board of selectmen meeting, cause somebody doesn't like to have it announced.
Adrian's birthday being February.
Oh, no, come on.
Collected in the February month.
No.
Yeah.
I don't have a birthday.
No, but we will sing. This month is Paula's month. We're not gonna, we're not gonna stomp on your parade, Paula. Thank you very much.
Oh.
Letting us celebrate with you. Um, is there anything else we need to talk about? Cause this meeting ran a little bit longer than our last meeting. I blame that all on.
Adrian.
Yeah.
Yep, again.
After we're done with this meeting officially. We need to have a quick board discussion. Technically not a meeting for Dennis O'Brien to talk about collective bargaining.
We're gonna do this today?
Yeah, at least having a preliminary discussion, sure.
Okay, um. Then we're gonna go to adjournment. Someone wanna make a motion?
See y'all on Wednesday at my important board of ed meeting. Happy birthday Paula.
Are we singing to anybody there, Shannon?
Uh, yes, we will be saying goodbye to Laura Edwards and giving her a gift. And a cake and a lot of other swag, so. If you would like to be there in person, I might actually give you a piece of cake, Adrian. And it is, is, it's Lisa Hewitt's birthday last Friday, so she will be celebrated also.
I'm afraid it'll make me wear it.
Okay.
That could be a possibility.
Did uh, someone make the motion to adjourn?
Yes, seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor, hi. Alright, thank you very much. Uh, Amanda, can you uh terminate the people that need to be off of this conversation?
See you guys.
Can I, I was gonna suggest we keep Mark Brinker, but apparently not, okay, nevermind.
Okay, so do we wanna stop recording? Do we wanna stamp Nick?
Yeah, I think we ought to send Nick back and.